Good evening and welcome to the March 17th special meeting of the Chatham Select Board. This meeting is being scheduled and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. It's general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until July 15th, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder, please, that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and our conference ID is 134208476 pound. Or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link on the proposed agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. Real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And again, just a reminder to everyone, please mute your mics and turn off your cameras until you're speaking. Let's start off with a poll call. Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
Present.
Clerk Corey Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Dean Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Jeff Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair Peter Kokolos is present. Let's do just a quick overview of what we're having, doing tonight. Catching up is what we're doing. The first thing we'll have are public comments on the business agenda, which follows. We have 12 CPA articles that are going to town meeting. And let me just read them off quickly. We have Affordable Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Housing Coordinator, a Lower Cape Housing Institute, the Orleans Cape Cod Five Housing. Historic side, we have Marconi Lattice Tower Preservation, Atwood House Roofing and Siding Restoration, the Nickerson Family Association Barn Preservation. We get into Recreation for Volunteer Park Playground, Bike Ways Improvements on George Ryder Road, Jackknife Harbor Beach. And then we get into the administrative budget and talk about reserves of a 10% requirement. Then have a general bylaw amendment on the waterways, Chapter 265, which we had already placed, but we asked it to be edited and brought back to us for a vote. We have a general bylaw amendment on proposed polystyrene and expanded polystyrene foam bylaw. Attached to that, if it's put on the agenda is a Waterways Bylaw Amendment at Chapter 26-510. And then we finally end up with the last one was the capital authorization of the Chatham Municipal Airport, federal fiscal year 2023 capital improvement, but has to do with navigation easements. Okay, so let's start with any public comments by the, any comments by the public on that agenda item. Let me get over to my. Don't see anything. Do you, Shereen?
I don't, but you can remind folks to raise their hands. Oh, Susanna Nickerson.
Oh, there she is. Yes, I see her.
Hi, I wasn't sure if I should speak now or speak when the topic of the styrofoam floats comes up.
No, you can speak right now, Suzanne.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I'm Susanna Nickerson, a resident of Main Street, Chatham. Thank you, Select Board, for allowing me to speak on this important matter. With the current situation in our Chatham waterways of the breakdown of blue styrofoam and white styrofoam, I think it is important to add a bylaw to prohibit the use of this material in Chatham waterways. I understand that some time may be needed for dock and float owners to change existing floats to a new safe alternative. Nevertheless, the problem is currently with us. We need to carefully consider how much time to allow for these blue styrofoam and white styrofoam floats to continue to break down in our waters. Thank you for reaching out to all interested parties in deciding this matter. I would further make a suggestion that all marinas and private float owners be required to remove blue styrofoam pieces from their property shorelines and marshes that abut Chatham waters. Thank you again for addressing this important protective bylaw proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. See any others? I don't.
I don't, Peter.
Peter, you skipped those public announcements and item requests. I don't know if there are any, but we passed over that.
I'm sorry, Dean. Yeah, you're correct. I'm trying to juggle on my iPad.
Dr. Duncanson has his hand up.
Yeah, okay, Dr. Duncanson, welcome.
Yes, thank you. I won't be too long here. I just wanted to let the board know as well as the public. The contractor is going to be back for the Main Street Stormwater Project tomorrow, weather permitting, in front of the Eldridge Garage Property. They were planning on doing paving tomorrow. So I just wanted folks to know that. There will probably be some slowness to the traffic. Hopefully they can keep one lane open, but if not, we'll have that detour that we had several weeks ago, Shore Road and Chatham Bar Zav. So it's only going to be for tomorrow, just while they do the paving work. So thank you very much.
Well, will that project, will that complete the project?
That should complete the project. We were waiting for some additional information from the contractor regarding some further work regarding Main Street drainage that we found during this project, but I haven't, we haven't received that to the best of my knowledge. So I expect that that may be put off to a later time. But we'll keep you advised.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Bob. Any other comments from the public?
It looks like Alex has her, Alex has her hand up.
Hey, Alex.
Yes, thank you. I just heard from the Treasurers Office that the second half tax bills will be mailed out next week. So I want to alert the public that those will be in their mail coming up. They are due May 2nd, as May 1st is a Sunday. Monday, May 2nd is the due date, but I did want to alert the public that they will be coming out. We're getting them out a little bit early, earlier than usual this year. So just to notify.
We're all thrilled with that, Alex. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments?
Dr. Duncanson still has.
Hello, is there a way to request a public comment by phone?
Sure, sure.
Oh, hi there, Peter. This is, this is Paula Lofgren. I'm watching on the TV. I could not log in on my computer. So may I make a comment?
Oh, you sure may. And is this for an agenda item or is it a public comment on our existing agenda?
This is a comment on tonight's business.
Okay, super. Yeah, I made a mistake and I jumped ahead. So hang on for a second. Let me just see if there are any more public comments or on business agenda items. Besides Paula.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Duncan, Dr. Duncanson still has his hand up, so I don't know if he has additional comments he wants to make.
Hey, Dr. Bob.
I'll take the test.
I'm all set, Peter. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, let's, let me move over again to public comments on our business agenda. And Paula, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I'm not used to this, this digital part with the phone. Thank you, Chairman Kokolos. I'd like to comment on the warrant article for capital authorization for the Chatham Municipal Airport. First, I would like to disclose two things. One, I have no desire to close the airport. When I served on the Airport Commission, I did so for the purposes of helping sustain and improve the airport, not injure or close it. Two, my residence is not one of the properties identified in this article as requiring an navigation easement. That being said, I would like to ask the Select Board to consider withholding their support for this warrant article for two reasons. First, it is incomprehensible to me that the Airport Commission is asking residents on the easement list to raise $1.8 million by increasing their own taxes to pay for easements on their own property, which will then devalue and place restrictions on their own property. Asking friends and neighbors to be part of this scheme is equally unnerving to me. Even if this money is reimbursable by the FAA, that reimbursement will once again require residents to accept the grant assurances that come with federal funding. 20 more years of contractual obligation to the FAA. Given that the town is currently wrestling with grant assurance obligations that are some 50 years old, I would caution against signing any additional assurances until the RPZ delo is figured out. My second comment refers to FAA mandates. In recent meetings of the Select Board with regards to the airport, it's been stated that members of the general public, such as myself, cannot understand the constraints of dealing with a federal authority, namely the FAA. In the matter of FAA mandates, what the FAA says we must do, we must do because of the grant assurances. In order to clear up confusion after the February 8th Select Board meeting, I emailed Chairman Harrison and asked him this yes or no question. Is the proposed new selected approach, which requires many of these easements mandated by the FAA, yes or no? I received no reply. This past weekend, I asked Chairman Harrison in person the same question. Is the proposed new approach, which requires many of these easements mandated by the FAA, yes or no? He could not answer the question one way or the other, and he told me that he would check with the airport's recently hired aviation legal counsel. I have received no answer. It is extremely worrisome to me that after multiple years and hundreds of thousands of dollars spent creating the master plan and defending the master plan and its selected approach to the public, that the Chair of the Airport Commission does not know whether or not this initiative is mandated. Select Board, if this new selected approach, which will cost $1.8 million at the outset, is not a FAA mandate, but simply the choice and desire of the Airport Commission, I would ask that you advocate for the many, many residents of Chatham who will be negatively impacted by multiple aspects of this initiative and withhold your support for this warrant request. Thank you, and thank you for your patience with trying to be part of the meeting.
Hey, Paula, no problem. I'm having the same problem. I couldn't get on, so I'm on one mic on my computer. I had to go to my iPad. Anyone else who have comments on our agenda tonight?
Don't see any, Peter.
All right, let's, let's move ahead. And we'll get into the Community Preservation Act, our 12 articles. Alex, Alex, do you want to start? And then if Shereen would like, she's our liaison. You want to make any comments ahead of time? And I noticed, well, welcome Debbie, the Chair of the CPC. Thanks. Okay, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we're all here tonight to answer any questions you might have regarding the articles that the Community Preservation Committee has recommended to town meeting. In your packet, I've broken them down by the categories of the community housing, historic preservation, and recreation. We, there were no applications under the open space category, so that will be part of the statutory 10% that must be reserved under open space. So in your packet, we've explained that the Community Preservation Committee is recommending 10 projects for funding, totaling $1,530,860. In addition, there are two other separate articles. One is the administrative budget for $15,000. And the other is the statutory reserves, which brings the total to $1,725, $25,860. Pointing out that seven of these projects are town-sponsored projects or requested for town property. And we'll go through those as we go through the projects. The CPC has recommended and reviewed these articles. You have copies of the articles in your packet showing the vote of the Community Preservation Committee as well. The Finance Committee has acted on all these projects, except for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which I'll go into a little bit of detail, moving through the different categories. And that's the one that I'm going to start with, if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chair, or if you have any questions right now on the process, I'm happy to answer anything.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. I'm going to just check the board. Do we want to go through these individually and then vote? Go through them all? What's the preference? To go through them all and then come back and vote individually? Any preference for the board?
Go by categories.
Go by categories? Okay, that's what we'll do then, Alex, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that with respect to individual items, we can have an individual vote on a particular one, because I have a problem with one of them.
Okay, so do I. Okay, Alex.
Okay, thank you. Under community housing, there are total, the total of four applications is $645,000. The largest recommendation on that is for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There was a lot of discussion under, by the Community Preservation Committee. As you know, your board had requested that 80% of the available revenues be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And that was at the outset of the budget process, prior to receiving all the applications. The Community Preservation Committee decided to leave that recommendation to the very end, after they reviewed all the other applications to see what funds might be available. And talking to the Community Development Department as well, it was suggested that, you know, rather than the $100,000 that has been recommended prior to last year, that at least a minimum of $500,000 be recommended to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that is the recommendation before you tonight. Again, the reasons partly for that is that there's a balance of $2.7 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund right now. However, 687,000 of that is earmarked for a particular project. But 500,000 would mostly reimburse that particular project and also leave some money in the fund balance of the overall community preservation fund to move forward to next year, not knowing what the revenues might be in the future and/or the state match. So we didn't want to deplete the fund completely and not have anything to build on for next year, should an additional project come up. So the recommendation for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is $500,000. The second article under that is for the Affordable Housing Coordinator, $30,000. As you know, we've proposed to have a Housing and Sustainability Director in the FY 2023 budget, but this $30,000 gives us some continuity in the interim until we can actually hire both the Housing and Sustainability Director, as well as the Principal Planner. Both positions will be needed in order to fulfill the requests and the amount of time that's going to be dedicated to the housing initiatives. So the $30,000 will provide that continuity, as well as give us some resources, should they be needed for training, et cetera. The Lower Cape Housing Institute, this is a project that has been funded in the past, and this provides training for local officials. $15,000 would cover two years, so it's 7,500 per year. And that's presented by the Community Development Partnership. I believe members of this board, and I know members of the Finance Committee have both attended the Housing Institute and found it very useful. And then the final application under the community housing is for Penrose LLC, which is submitted by Penrose LLC. And that's for the housing in Orleans at the former Cape Cod Five headquarters located by Skegget Corners. This is a regional approach to housing, and they have, Penrose has asked the towns of Eastham, Wellfleet, and Chatham to contribute to this, as well as Orleans is contributing over $1 million to this project. And the goal is to provide much-needed housing in Orleans with the hope that in the future, if Chatham reaches out to other towns for the support from their community preservation committees, that it would be reciprocated. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have those. I have the explanations and the articles, and I'll pause there for under affordable housing.
Thank you, Alex. I just have a general question, then I'll turn it over to Shereen, and then I know that Dean has a question. Just a general, general question on, on the reserves that are put in. I was reading it. I tend to be a numbers guy. Sometimes I get too lost in the numbers. But how do you come up, it's not a critical. I think the numbers you have are correct. How do you get to 10% where you were putting what, $452,000, I guess, will, will be in the reserves? I'm not looking at my sheet. I'm just looking at that. And I see Debbie's hands up, but do you want to say anything first before I go to Debbie?
If I might, yes. We're estimating, well, we're putting in reserves about 180,000. And that would meet the 10% and probably excess for each of those categories. So it's a total of 540,000 to go into the reserves.
The 10% is on each of the, the one, okay, I sort of get it.
Each of them, and then we'll draw from the reserves for all the items, except for the open space.
Yeah, makes sense. Shereen, I'm going to go to Debbie first.
Okay.
Go ahead, Debbie. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add that the Harvard CPC voted favorably on the $100,000 application. I think all of the other towns that they've gone to, the CPCs have approved it to go to town meetings. I just wanted to add that. And I also wanted to say that this whole idea of the regional approach, just to give you an example, suppose we had an application for the fire department and we didn't have any, this person didn't have any place that they could find to live. If we had something in Orleans that was available, this person could go to the lottery and maybe we'd succeed in getting a town employee. So, you know, it is going to benefit all the towns in the area. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first off, I do want to thank the committee for their diligence and good work, and especially Chair Aikman. She did a great job being her first-year chair, but not her first rodeo show, obviously. Yeah, not at all. And she was a good fit for this, for this. I do have to say, you know, when they were discussing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Orleans-Penrose project and, and what they were putting into reserve, I do understand the reserve, you know, putting, putting money into reserves. However, and I want to say thank you to the housing advocates on the committee, which was from the housing, rep from the Housing Authority and from the Community Housing Partnership. But I just want to say this. I understand the regional approach to things, and I appreciate that Orleans is far ahead of us. However, we are way behind in our affordable housing here in Chatham, and one member depicted our two-something million that we have in our trust fund as a war chest. It's simply not that. We have many pending projects that haven't come to light yet. We're, we're in the works constantly on looking at new properties and whatnot. And, you know, we really want to be ready, ready to be able to move forward with, with things. And, and I really, I really had, would have liked to have seen that 100,000 go into Chatham's, Chatham's coffers rather than Orleans. And I'm, and I know that down the road, there may be some regional approaches, but we, we're also hearing from the committee that, you know, you know, trying to build on the state match, maybe there won't be as much money. You know, there's always these ifs, ands, or buts. And I think we need to be addressing things in the immediate rather than in the future. And, and we need to really be concentrating on our community sustainability for year-round residents. So I'm gonna, I'm not going to not vote to approve this, but I do want to send that message to the, to the CPA that the committee, that this is what our focus has been in Chatham, our goals and objectives as Select Board members. And we are at critical issue right now, and this is, you know, one of the things that we really think is important to the town. So saying all that, again, I do want to thank them for their good work, and I, I will, I will not not vote, but I just wanted to make sure that I made my feelings clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Dean? Thank you, Shereen. Dean? You're on mute.
Peter, I think Corey was actually ahead of me.
No, you were first.
Oh, really?
Okay. Thank you, thank, thank you, Peter. I want to talk about the, the Penrose proposal. And I share some of the things that Shereen voiced, because I think $1,000 would have been better applied to the Affordable Housing Trust of the town of Chatham. I think we should be looking to build homes in Chatham. I, I understand what Debbie was saying, that you could have a firefighter or other type of worker that we're trying to recruit, that wind up with a dwelling unit in this Orleans project. But the key word is maybe. It's, it's subject to lottery. I have a question or two for either Alex or Debbie. The 100,000, who, to whom would that be paid? To the developer, Penrose, or does it go to the town of Orleans?
Developer, Penrose.
Okay. And it was the developer, Penrose, that made the application?
Correct.
Okay. And this is a developer out of Pennsylvania? I was just Googling today.
Yes.
Name, developer?
They have, they have, I think they're headquartered in Pennsylvania. They do have an office in Boston, and they were the developers of the Nauset Green in Eastham, which has put up, I think, 65 units most recently.
Do we know why they need this money from us? I mean, they're in business. They can get loans. Have they expressed any, given any explanation for that, why they're, you know, going around to the different towns, CPC committees, looking for funding?
I'm pulling their application.
That's okay. We don't have to dwell on that. I guess I'll just leave that as a question hanging out there. Debbie, you mentioned that Harwich's CPC has approved this. Do you know if the Select Board has? I think they still call themselves Board of Selectmen there. Do we know if they've taken any action on it? Because I hadn't seen anything yet.
I do not know if it's gone to the Select Board in Harwich. I only know about the CPC.
Okay. As, as Shereen intimated, the town of Orleans is already at or over 10% in terms of their SHI. They don't need this additional housing for that purpose. I think the intention is admirable or commendable about a regional approach. But this is more than just a regional problem. This is a problem all over the state. Quincy Patriot Ledger about a month ago had a huge article about housing, affordable housing problems up there. So this is a state issue, it's a national issue. And I, I'm, I, I, it's not easily conceivable that the town of Chatham is going to have a project down the line where we're going to be able to look to our sister communities for contribution. And I'm not even sure that there's any compelling obligation on the part of these other towns to, to chip in when, when we go cap and hand looking for something. But here's the more fundamental problem for me. We're sending, or about to send, because we haven't gotten the school budget yet, to town meeting, a request to, to add about $900,000 to the school budget, to help Chatham Elementary School stay afloat. We just approved an article for $425,000 for a pre-K program. $1.3 million total to help Chatham Elementary School. But here we are, being asked to send $100,000 to help build housing in, in Orleans for families that are going to send their kids to Nauset. So that seems to me to be working at cross purposes. Now, I appreciate and respect the, the Community Preservation Committee for their deliberations, but I, I think they really got this one backwards. And I say that very respectfully, Debbie, because you know how, how much I, and how that work you do for the town. So I'm, I'm going to take it a step farther than my, my good friend, Shereen. I'm going to vote no on this one. Thank you, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Dean. Corey?
Thank you, Peter. First, I wanted to talk about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. You know, I know we were looking for a little bit larger amount, but I do totally appreciate the 500,000, allotted to this category. That would be a significant amount of money, and we can do very good things with that. I too also want to make a comment on the Penrose Construction Project, and ask a couple of clarification questions. So I know the town of Eastham has approved 100,000. Town of Province Town, 20,000, and Orleans itself has approved 2 million dollars. If I've heard correctly from previous conversations tonight, Harwich may have approved 100,000. Does anyone know the status of the town of Truro, the dollar amount that they are considering and have or have not approved? I guess that's my first question.
Don't have that amount in there. I know they did apply to Truro. And just to answer a previous question, the Chatham CPA funds would be spent on hard construction costs. But I don't have that amount from Truro.
Do you happen to know if each town was approached with a $100,000 price? And I'm wondering why Province Town is only 20,000?
I believe. Yeah, I, I'm not sure why Province Town is only 20,000, maybe because they are much further out on the Lower Cape. So just the distance might be one of the reasons. I do think Penrose, if I recall from the conversation, was requesting $100,000 from the other towns. And they may have requested 100,000 from Province Town, but I don't recall that.
Okay, no, and I, I can, I can appreciate the regional approach, I really can. I, you know, part of me does want to vote against this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I am gonna, you know, I will vote for it. But my read on this is Province Town, because they are making great strides with their affordable housing units, probably thought, you know, 20,000 was a more appropriate number for them, being a good neighbor. And, you know, we picked $100,000, which is probably the amount that they applied for. So, you know, it's going to be up to the voters. And if they want to approve $100,000, then that is their prerogative. They can also, after reflecting on this, if maybe the voters on town meeting floor want to reduce that amount of money, that's, that's, that's up to them at that point in time. But it's, it is, it is a little bit of an awkward conversation to have, because it is going to go to the construction, the direct construction cost to a private developer, but for a good cause. So I will support it slightly reluctantly. But, you know, it's, 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 this is something that Chatham, we are dealing with, have been dealing with, and will continue to deal with for quite some time. And I don't see, you know, I would hope we're not going to get a lot more applications in the future of money going out of town, unless they keep the money in town, because we certainly need it for people who are gonna, you know, we're gonna build the units in town. And we very well may have people from other towns coming forth to, to fill these units. So that's my piece for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Jeff? I, your hands up, but I'm gonna go through the board first before I come back to you, okay?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I echo many of the sentiments that have been voiced thus far in this conversation about this article. You know, we, we should be taking a regional approach, and, you know, the need for affordable housing doesn't know town boundaries. But, you know, that's on the one side of the argument. The other side of the argument is, we're playing catch-up in this town. Seven units in 10 years, I think that those numbers keep rattling around in my brain that we heard on Tuesday night. And we really are playing catch-up. So a couple of comments. I wish that the allocation of the Affordable Trust Fund was, was more. I think we were expecting it to be in the 800 grand range, that's what we asked for. And, you know, maybe we give 50 grand over to Orleans, and we pick up another 50 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We throw the, you know, we make a statement that, yes, we understand that we take a regional approach, but maybe it's not 100. I don't know. I'm, I'm probably gonna support it, but I do so reluctantly, because I think on this one, you know, Chatham comes first. Now, we did support the investment, I think it was $100,000 of CPA funds, CPC funds, for the, for the village that was built in Orleans, for the artistic kids. And I thought that was wonderful, and I supported that wholeheartedly. But on the affordable side of the equation, I'm like, boy, we, we, Chatham really is in need, and we need funds to do it. And in terms of Selectman Davis' earlier comment about a war chest, come on. You know, we know how much money it costs to buy very dear land, and how costly it is to build these days. We're, we're gonna need a war chest. We're gonna get it done. So I'm, I'm gonna vote for it. I'll be interested to hear the debate at town meeting. And I'm fairly ambivalent, even though I recognize and realize and understand, obviously, what a regional approach is, having been so involved in creating the regional schools here for years. But anyway, those are my comments and my thoughts, and I think a lot of the thoughts tonight were very well thought out. Appreciate them.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. This is the one I had a problem with too. And I do want to thank the CPC for, for the money we received in the Affordable Housing Trust. And I, I went back and tried to watch some of it, and I, it's tough. You guys gotta have big decisions to make. On this one, I have the same problem. I, to be honest, I'm a proponent, have been, at, at our, our county meetings, that we should have a regional approach. My thought was, regional approach is, we have some sort of an understanding between each of the, each of the towns. Everyone's mentioned what was here, and I won't go through all of them, especially the consideration of a war chest. And it depends on how you, you view what a war chest is supposed to be. But we've gone through a period of, of a, a, a couple of opportunities that because of, you can't move quickly, you lose them. And, and, and if you have funds, that'll help a lot, especially when it comes to affordable housing. And I'm not going to belabor the point yet. Orleans does have, meet their, their 10%, and we're probably lower than 5%. I'll make a comment that I saw read in the paper recently. Orleans has 27 new kids going to their schools over there, and they were, they were trying to figure out how they're going to pay for that. That's a good problem to have, as far as we're, at least I'm concerned. Here's my issue with the $100,000. And it's, it's, it depends on how you look at how, how dear that $100,000 is. I don't know what that requirement is. Here's a question. What's the, what's the, the local preference that they're putting on there? Do you know? Yep. Debbie, go ahead, if you know, or... It must have some sort of a local preference. They go like 70%, I think.
Alex, do you know that percent?
Yeah.
The thing that I recall is that if, if, they might not even get that percent fulfilled. If they didn't, it goes back into preference for surrounding towns. So they may not even fill the Orleans preference with the percent that they're allowed. But Chatham might benefit from that.
Sure.
For the initial lottery, the proposed preferences are 65% of the apartments for households who live, work, or have children that go to the school in the town of Orleans. And then 10% of the apartments for households who live, work, or have children that go to school in the regional lower and outer Cape towns. So that would be Chatham.
Yeah, like, you know, we have the same problem. Shereen made a comment the last time that, you know, I agree, you know, once somebody's here, they're, they're a resident. And here, here's my, here's my problem with, with sending the money over to, to this account, given that we have such a need in, in Chatham. Someone's going to work here, and that's great. We're looking to try to, to, to have a community that's sustainable. And that community is sustainable because of the people that are here, and because of the workers that come. Somebody can live in Orleans, and they can come and work here, and that, that's great. It helps our, it helps our business, helps our workers. But they go back, and where are they going to spend their money, and where are they going to pay their taxes? They're going to do that in, in, in Orleans. And that, okay, you know, that's fine. But we have a, a community sustainable problem that includes people that have to live here. So, you know, the balance isn't there for me, and I have a really tough time accepting it. And I'm still struggling on whether I'm gonna vote for it or against it. And I, I, it goes against the grain to go, to vote against something that has, that, that is associated with, with housing. And, and I know it's, it'd be a minority vote, but at the same time, maybe that sends a little bit of a message. If I had a better understanding of how we could work cooperatively, and I know the number of people on that Orleans board want to do that. And we've made it clear across the county that we'd like to do something. And it's gonna be hard to put some kind of a memorandum and agreement together. But in any case, that's kind of how I'm feeling, and it, it bothers me. And I, and I, it bothers me that, that we're not moving fast enough. And I know what everything that's going on. We're moving really quickly, given the circumstances. And a number of things are going to happen all at once. But Shereen, I see your hand up. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
I just want to make it clear that I'm amending what I said before, and I'm gonna vote to place it, but I'm not gonna vote to recommend it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Alex or Debbie? And we'll go back to the, to the first, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see Debbie's hand is up.
You're on mute.
Yep.
There it is. I got, I read your lips.
Okay, so I'm not sure if you want to vote on the categories as you go along, and so, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, if we can.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, let's start with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Motion to, hold on a second, let me get over to the right pages, move to place, and then a move to recommend.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of, I guess, Alex?
Yes.
I know we typically, and we should, take votes to place. Don't these automatically go on the warrant? I've heard that both ways.
The charter calls for the Select Board to place all articles on the warrant, and that has been the practice in the past. I know other towns, the Community Preservation Committee can just get them on the warrant. But it is our practice to have the Select Board place these on the warrant.
Okay.
Additionally, with a nine-member committee and one other person, they could put them on by petition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So let's start with, again, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Motion, move to vote to place on CPC, Housing Trust Fund on the board.
Mr. Chair? I moved to, I moved to place the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the amount of $500,000 on the warrant.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, let's go through a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Jeff? He's frozen.
Oh, he's frozen. Okay, the chair says aye. Let's see if we can get him back. This is an interesting, we have to wait till Jeff is back before we get finished with this.
Yeah, I, I, I lost you, but I'm back, guys.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
On the screen. Yes.
I know, but I, I lost you, and then I came back all of a sudden.
There he is. He's back.
All right, we're taking a vote. We've gotten on, on the first placing of, of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund on the warrant.
Yep.
Okay, and the chair says, and the chair says aye. Let's, we need a vote to recommend.
Motion to recommend the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
Okay, no discussion. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Seems to be a longer lag than we normally have, or maybe it's my iPad again.
My fear iPad.
All right, let's move to the Housing Coordinator. We need a motion to, motion to place, and then a motion to recommend.
Mr. Chair, I move to place the Affordable Housing Coordinator in the amount of $30,000 on the warrant.
Okay.
Second.
All right, discussion, seeing none. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, vote to recommend.
Mr. Chair, I vote to recommend the CPC article for Affordable Housing Coordinator in 30,000, in the amount of $30,000.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, seeing none. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And next is our Lower Cape Housing Institute. And the chair says aye. And next is our Lower Cape Housing Institute.
Mr. Chair, I vote to place the, I mean, I move to place the CPC article for Lower Cape Housing Institute, $15,000 on the article, on the warrant.
Second?
Second.
Good. Discussion will start. We'll go backwards this time. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Next to recommend?
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend the CPC article for Lower Cape Housing Institute in the amount of $15,000 to be placed on the warrant.
Second.
Second. Discussion, okay. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Move to, aye.
Okay, chair says aye. And finally, for housing, the Orleans Cape Cod Five Housing Article. To place and to recommend.
Move to place?
Okay, do we have a second? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? We've had our discussion. Let me take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Now we need a vote to recommend.
Motion to recommend.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have any discussion? We'll start with Shereen.
No.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says no. Okay, let's move on to historic.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the historic preservation category, there are three applications. One from the town of Chatham for the Marconi Lattice Tower Preservation and potential move of the tower. One for the Chatham Historical Society for the Atwood House Roof, $20,860, which is a portion of the historic portion of a larger project. And the large one of $300,000 from the Nickerson Family Association for the Historic Barn Preservation. And this is the historic barn that was located at Shell Drive and is being, well, actually has been moved to the Nickerson Family Association compound down by Ryder's Cove with the hope of restoring the barn back to its original status. So again, $75,000 is for the Marconi Lattice Tower. And that is actually to look at the three towers down there. One is very close to the landing on Ryder's Cove and is in danger of, when we look to redo Ryder's Cove landings, there is some concern whether, how to preserve and/or restore that tower that's down there by the landing. So it's really, we had looked at two town-sponsored applications prior to this combined application. Combined application is from Terry Whalen and Ted Keon. And actually, it's a lot less money than we were originally looking at. And that would fund the preservation restorations of the three lattice towers. The two components of the towers are the implementing restoration and preservation measures for $40,000. And that was based upon findings from a previously funded assessment. And then the second component is conducting a relocation study to safely move the Tower One, which is located on the northeast corner of the Marconi Waterfront Triangle away from the coastal bank. And it was reaching out to engineers. That is estimated that that will not cost a lot of money for the town, and it's easily done as the towers are fairly light and they're in fairly good condition as well. And I see Jeff has his hand up, and we're happy to try and answer any questions that we can.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Alex. Listen, it says, and I seem to recollect that we had money from CPC funds before for the first part of this, for the restoration and preservation. Do we still have those funds available?
There's, I think, some funds remaining, but a lot of that was for protecting the powerhouse and the garage building as well. So it's sort of a combination. So that's a reason why this is not a $300,000 application, but $75,000.
Okay, and I know that the Marconi Board is thrilled about this, so I imagine it's going to get a whole lot of attention and a favorable vote at town meeting, but they've been talking about doing something with the towers for a while now. And the one that's closest to Ryder's Cove is, we really need to move it if we're going to preserve it, and everybody wants to preserve it. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, Alex, unless somebody else is coming? Go ahead.
Okay, moving on to the next application under historic is, excuse me, the Atwood House Roof. And again, this is a request for $20,860 from the Chatham Historical Society. And this is over the mural barn area. Again, as I said, this is part of a larger project. The total project is 71,482. However, not all of that covers the historic portion. So this is for the historic portion of that restoration. And this has a support from the Chatham Historical Commission as well.
Dean?
Thank you, Peter. I don't have a question. I just want to state for the record, I have a standing written disclosure statement in the town clerk's office. I'm a member of the Historical Society. I'm not a director. I'm not a trustee. I'm not an officer. So I intend to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Any other comments? Okay, Alex. Oh.
Oh, no, never mind.
Okay, and then the third application is being submitted by the Nickerson Family Association. And this is for the Historic Barn Preservation. Again, this is the barn that was previously located at 68 Shell Drive, built around 1695 and believed to be built by William Nickerson's son, William. So again, this would, what the project would do is to preserve the barn. They've currently flaked the barn, which is sort of disassembled it, and are storing all the original parts at the Nickerson Family Homestead down there by Ryder's Cove. And then they will have it reconstructed using 17th century tools and as it would have been back in 1695 or thereabouts to reconstitute the barn. Again, using the materials that have been flaked and using tools and woodworking techniques that would have been used when it was constructed in the 1690s.
Thank you, Alex. Dean, your hand's up.
Yeah, I just had a question, Alex or Debbie. Once this is back as far as up over at the Nickerson Family Homestead, will it be open to the general public from time to time, or is it just going to be used for association members?
It says that it will be open, and they will, let's see, I'm just looking at this. The application. So again, similar, the barn will house educational seminars and lectures, as well as educated classroom programs for children and young people. Provide an opportunity for visitors of both properties to walk the site of the original homestead as well. And I think that's what I have here. I'm just reading.
But that's sufficient. I do want to commend the Historical, the Historical Association, sorry, the Historical Commission of the town of Chatham, the CPC, and actually the owner of the, the new owner of the property at 65, is it 65 or 68?
68.
Yeah, because extremely cooperative and very patient. I don't know him, but I only know what I read in the papers. And for being able to preserve as much of that property or that homestead as we could. And this barn almost was going to go up to Sandwich at one point, and they wanted it. I spoke with the director of the Sandwich Museum over the summer. They were looking for it. And disappointed when the Chatham Nickerson Family Association decided to take it. But it's a good thing for everybody, so I'm going to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Shereen?
Yes, I too, I've been in the barn. I got to see the interior of the barn. It was really exciting to walk through it. You get a very unique sense of the construction. And I really, I really love the idea that this town is going to have a cultural experience that's going to be a living history sort of experience for people to not only just go to the barn after it's built, but to be able to experience the building as it goes forward using older methods to build it. That's really going to be a really cool thing to watch. And I hope people that are studying construction will be able to go over there like kids at the tech or anything to see that kind of construction being done. But I really want to give a shout out to the Historic Commission Chair, Frank Messina. He was tenacious in his approach to this property and has worked diligently with the property owner, who I'd like to thank and appreciate for his efforts to preserve pieces of this property. I'm a descendant of William Nickerson, and when I walked on to, you know, into the barn and into the, it was really moving for me personally. So thank you to all of them, and I'm wholeheartedly supporting this project.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeffrey?
Yeah, ditto here. Very much, very much supportive. You know, I was thinking that, you know, it's great to preserve history. The 36500s over in Orleans, life-saving stations up in P-Town. I guess we're getting the Coast Guard Boathouse back, but, you know, again, I applaud the Historical Commission, Frank's leadership and his tenacity, as Shereen just noted, and the hard work of a lot of people, especially the homeowner was tenacious too. The homeowner didn't give up, looking for solutions. So, you know, this was a story that ended well, and it's going to be an asset for the town, steeped in history. And we've lost a little bit of our history lately. It's good to keep it around, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. You know, that's what I was going to mention, is that the homeowner had a, he stayed with this for a couple of years, and that takes a lot, and you have to thank them. But I think that everyone involved did just a fabulous job. Okay, with that, any other comments? Let's go back for a vote on, for, let me try this. We need a motion. We have a motion to place the Marconi Lattice Tower Preservation on the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second? Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Now I need a motion to recommend the Marconi Lattice Tower Preservation onto the warrant.
Tomo.
Second.
Second. Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Let's move on to the Atwood House Roofing and Siding Restoration. A motion to place on the warrant.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, okay, we'll start with Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We have a motion to move the Atwood House Roofing and Siding Restoration, a motion to recommend the Atwood House Roofing and Siding Restoration.
So moved.
I thought I heard a second, right?
Second.
Okay, and now, Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And we'll go over to the Nickerson Family Association Barn Preservation. A motion to place on the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And final motion under historic is the motion to recommend the Nickerson Family Association Barn Preservation.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And then we move on to Recreation, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, under Recreation, there are also three applications for FY 2023. These total $490,000. There's an application from the Recreation Department for the Volunteer Park Playground at $300,000. And there are two other applications, which are both matching, requesting funds for grant matches. One is the expansion of the Old Colony Rail Trail, specifically along George Rider Road, where there's a shared path. And the other is from our Coastal Resources Department for Jackknife Beach, and that is also a matching grant. So the Old Colony Rail Trail Expansion is looking for $90,000. This was submitted by the Bike Ways Committee. And again, that would, if, as you know, on George Rider Road, there's sort of a, the bike path comes out onto the road and crosses the road, and it has been an issue of, one of safety for our both pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists. So that was the idea there. They've applied to the Mass Trails. One second. So this would be, as I said, a Mass Trails, which is offering grants specifically for this type of project. And safety improvements are one of the, they're high, I guess, high use or they score high points for safety improvements on the bike paths. So it's a $90,000 request on that. And then Jackknife Beach is requesting $100,000, and that is also a matching grant for a fourth CDM, the Coastal Zone Management Grant. So again, the estimated construction of the project is $400,000. That would provide better access down to Jackknife Beach, as well as preserving the shoreline, which has been, as you know, if you've been down there, has the sort of the cement bollards up to protect people from going over the dunes. And it's been a lot, quite a bit of, you know, trying to protect that area. So this would be, again, $100,000 for the matching grant. As far as the playground, I'd like to point out that Dan Tobin submitted this application to the CPC. He presented on his last day with the town prior to his retirement. The original request was for $225,000. And that was based on some of the other estimates were going on at the time for different playgrounds. DPW is expected to do a lot of the work to dismantle the existing playground to save costs. However, when the Community Preservation Committee looked at this, they also looked at the application that was, recalled the application that the Chatham Elementary School had put in and the poured-in-place surface that was incorporated into that playground request. For that reason, the CPC recommends that a poured-in-place be looked at for Volunteer Park and as a safety and more accessible option for the public. And so they requested $300,000 and put forward $300,000 to have the DPW and/or Recreation, once there's a new Recreation Director on board, consider that option. So I'm sure there might be some questions.
Yeah, thank you. I see Corey's hands up. I have a comment too, but go ahead, Corey.
Thank you, Peter. No, no, I just want to speak on the Volunteer Park Playground. I think I very much support this, and I very much appreciate the additional $75,000 being put toward the poured-in-place ground covering. This playground gets a lot of use. It's, I mean, it's a little over 20 years old, but I mean, a lot of use. It's, I mean, it's a little over twenty years old, but I mean, you know, just general people going there, families, mother groups, family groups, picnics, et cetera, during the recreational programs, you know, one sibling's playing a game, the other siblings are climbing around and jumping around. So this is a well-used playground. It is needs, it is worn. There is no two ways about it. I would hope that we could take some measure, and I don't know if we have the money to do it, but do a little bit of TLC to that between, you know, town meeting, hopefully approval of this, and the actual construction of the, of the playground, because there are some worn areas. There's a slide area that right now has a piece of plywood at the bottom of it because there's a big hole in it. So if we can do a little TLC to it, so it's safe for the summer, that would be greatly appreciated. But playground is served as well to, to redo it is appropriate. It will be used and the kids will have fun with it. So I very much support this. And again, I very much appreciate the additional seventy-five thousand dollars that was added to the original request.
Thanks, Corey. Jeff?
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I echo Corey's sentiments on the playground. I had a comment on the bikeway improvements. I really wish that we could extend those improvements down to Route twenty-eight, down to the rotary. It really is needed. And it's just too bad if we're going to do this on the, on the north end of the, the, the ends of the rail trail that somehow we couldn't squeeze out some money to, to get a sidewalk from, from the south entrance to the rail trail down, down to Route twenty-eight. So anyway, I've said it before, I'll say it again, it's just, it's just too bad that we're doing that piece and then not doing the rest of it. Really is incomplete without tying it to Route twenty-eight. And I'm going to support it, but I just really think, boy, I'd like to see some, a tie-in. It's a no-brainer, no-brainer.
Thanks, Jeff. And I was going to speak to that. I'm going to, the layers on to the Bike Ways Committee. One thing you could say about this Bike Ways Committee is they, they don't, they don't hang, they, they don't waste time in a lot of ways. They went through a lot. If you remember, when they presented it to us, I think you were here, but they presented the option to us and they showed that they have a proposal to get all the way down, but it requires a little more action. And this was the first part that they wanted to get done, going after the grants and they would, maybe Alex can answer this better, but they go after a different set of grants to get down to, to Route twenty-eight. And I'm with you, you know, I don't know how many times I tried thinking my grandkids from, you know, off the bike trail and then go over to, to Harding's Beach, ah, in the summer. That's tough. That's tough. I, I think I tried it once. And it was too much to take the little kids across that street. Now you could do it. I mean, given the way the rotaries are, you could make it, you could make it happen. And it would require, though, I think, you know, maybe some kind of a signage or something. So I fully support this and I thank the Bike Ways Committee for the work that they, they have done on this. Anything else? Okay, recreation, let's, whoops, I lost my place. Let's go back up to Volunteer Park. A motion to place Volunteer Park Playground on the warrant.
Removed.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, don't see any. We'll start with Shereen.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean? Dean, are you frozen? No, Dean, oh, he's unmuted.
Aye, sorry. Aye.
That's, that's, that's okay. Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Now we need a motion to recommend the
So moved.
The Volunteer Park Playground on
Second.
Got it. Okay, let me start, I'll start with Shereen again.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
You know, it's hard to believe it's been twenty years. Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, next, a motion to place the Bike Ways Improvement on George Rider Road on the warrant.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, no discussion. We'll start with Shereen again.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We need a, we have a motion to recommend the Bike Ways Improvements on George Rider Road.
So moved.
Second.
Get ahead of myself. Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And finally, finally, rec, excuse me, Recreation, a motion to place Jackknife Harbor Beach Improvements on the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Let's have a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We need a motion to recommend Jackknife Harbor Beach Updates.
Yeah, motion to recommend.
Second.
Second. Okay, let's start again with Dean.
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, Alex, we're over to the CPA Administrative Budget.
Okay, there are two more articles. And as you just mentioned, one is the Community Preservation Act Administrative Budget, which can be no more than five percent of their estimated revenues. Typically, we appropriate fifteen thousand dollars. Any funds that are not expended close back to the Community Preservation Fund Balance. This is used for our Community Preservation Coalition Membership Dues as well as any legal fees and minute taken.
Okay, any comments? Questions? Seeing none, can we have a motion, we have a motion to place the Administrative Budget in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion, none. Shereen?
Aye.
Uh, excuse me, Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We need a, we have motion to recommend the Administrative Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's have a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. And we get to our last one. Alex, our reserves, the ten percent requirement, which you sort of talked about already.
The last one is the ten percent requirement. As you said, we're requesting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for each of the ten percent, the open space purposes, historic purposes, and community housing purposes. As mentioned earlier, money will come out of those reserves for historic and community housing. However, the hundred and eighty thousand will remain in the open space since there's no project brought forward for this coming fiscal year. So total reserves of five hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, any discussion?
Move to place, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a second? Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And we need a motion to recommend the reserves of tempers.
So moved. Yeah, second.
Okay, Shereen?
Aye. Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much, Alex. Thank, thank you, Debbie. And your
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to our next agenda item, which is General Bylaw Amendment, excuse me, General Bylaw Amendment to Waterways, Chapter two sixty-five. I see, I didn't, it's hard for me to see, but we had Dr. Duncanson, I know is on, and I believe the Chair Dick Cosmer is on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As indicated in your packet, a couple of weeks ago, the Board did review the proposed changes to Chapter two sixty-five. At that point, select Board Member Nick Castro pointed out a couple of minor edits that needed to be made, as well as the fact that we needed to bring it back to you in town meeting format. And so that's what's included in your packet tonight. We have, there's been no other changes other than those two edits that Mr. Castro requested, as well as putting it in the appropriate town meeting format. So that is before you tonight. And Chairman Dick Cosmer is also on the, the Board's meeting tonight, and we'll be happy to answer any further questions. But we're basically asking the Board to, you've already voted to place it on the warrant. So tonight, we're asking you to vote to recommend the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duncanson. Any questions or comments? See, I'm not sure who went up first. It's either Corey or, let's go, Corey stands up.
Well, I was actually just going to make a motion. I know we've talked about this before. We already placed it. So I was just going to move to recommend it.
Okay. You have a motion to recommend, to recommend, we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. The only comment I'll make is that it, looking through it, there were comments made before that talked about the format. It follows the proper format. All the letters and numbering are correct. So, all right.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure, Dean.
Yeah, I just really, I think we touched on this the last time this was up. This has been a process of a couple of years. I want to commend the committee and the other committees that relate to the Waterways, our Special Counsel and the Board itself, our Engaging Special Counsel for this process, for those citizens, and including the summer residents who, you know, encouraged us to move in this direction. And I also want to commend select Board Members Matters and Dykens who participated, as well as Dr. Duncanson and others on the staff, the Harbor Master. I don't want to leave them out either, his staff. If I've missed anybody, I apologize. So I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Well said. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Next one up, really two, two together. But anyway, General Bylaw Amendment, Proposed Poly Styrene and Expanded Poly Styrene Foam Bylaw Change in Chapter two fifteen. Dr. Duncanson?
Yes, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to address the other article.
That's right.
Foam prohibition in Chapter two sixty-five first, because they are related, but this one is kind of, kind of the primary one. And depending how a vote at town meeting went on that one, this one, the second one, the two fifteen, would really just become housekeeping.
Correct. I have it in my hand and I read the wrong one off my screen.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. It was in the agenda backwards. We did, hopefully we've got that corrected in the town meeting warrant, but we didn't have time to correct the agenda. So anyway, just as background, back in the end of February, we brought, well, there was discussions in the Waterways Committee and a number of other committees about banning the use of foam for flotation in floating docks. And there had been an article prepared which basically had a sunset clause in it that said by January one, twenty twenty-five, all floats had to be retrofitted with something other than the blue foam. There was some, at the Waterways Committee, before your February meeting, there was some pushback from a couple of the local marinas who indicated that the February twenty, the January twenty twenty-five deadline was really too soon. And so there was discussion about that at the committee. No consensus could be arrived at. And so when the original article came due, the recommendation from the Waterways Advisory Committee was to postpone it. However, your board held from a number of others in the community, the South Coastal Harbor Plan Committee, as well as a number of residents, that urged that some action be taken at this year's town meeting, while that larger issue of a sunset clause was addressed. So we went back to the Waterways Advisory Committee, we went back to the South Coastal Harbor Plan Committee. And what's presented to you tonight is basically a slimmed-down article, if you will, which takes out the sunset prohibition and really focuses on new floats. So if you had to go out and build a float the day after this article would be adopted, you would not be able to use foam, except for foam that was properly encapsulated and designed for in-water use. But you could either use that option or you could use the tubs. And so this, this version of the article was supported by the Waterways Advisory Committee. It was supported by the South Coast Harbor Plan Committee. Yesterday, at the Shellfish Advisory Committee, they voted unanimously to support this article. And this type of article has also been supported by the Conservation Commission. So the, the three big components of this article, if you will, is it prohibits the use of bare foam flotation for new float construction. It requires the use of either the float boxes or encapsulated foam for new float construction. And it requires existing floats, if they're damaged in a storm or from some other mechanism, when they're rebuilt, they can't use the bare foam anymore. It does not require the wholesale removal of floats that utilize bare foam by any date certain. That topic will be discussed over the course of the summer and into the fall by the various committees with input from the marinas and others, to hopefully come up with a agreed-upon or a consensus sunset date, by which time all floats would have to be replaced. Because as you know, some of the marinas have large numbers of these floats. They can't replace a lot of them in any one year just because of space requirements and the cost. As we all know, everything is going through the roof. And also supply chain issues, trying to get some of the plastic tubs and some of the other ways that the encapsulated foam. You know, we're in the process right now of replacing most of the town floats and we're utilizing the tubs. And we are running into supply chain issues trying to get them and the price has skyrocketed. So, you know, if you were a marina that had twenty, thirty, fifty of these floats, you can imagine. So it's not that the marinas, the marinas are supportive of replacing them. They just want a longer timeframe than could be agreed upon quickly. And so that topic will be separated out and brought back for discussion with the intent of then revising this article or this bylaw at some point, probably in a fall town meeting, if there is one, or at next year's annual town meeting. And the other big change, or not big change, but the other change we did make was originally this was going to be included in Section two fifteen of the General Bylaws, which was our poly styrene and expanded poly styrene foam selection. However, in conversations with Town Council, the Harbor Master, and some others, we determined that it was more appropriate to simply put this into the Waterways Bylaw under Section ten, which is a section that deals with pollution, because this is really a pollution issue. And because it really only deals with floats as opposed to other forms of poly styrene, it was felt overall that this was the appropriate place to put it and would be easier for the public to know where to look. Instead of looking at a section of the bylaw, it was really instituted a number of years ago to deal with, you know, styrofoam cups and plates and all in restaurants. So those are the major changes. And with that, either I or Dick Cosmore would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bob. I think Jeff was first, then Shereen.
Thank you, Dr. Bob, and thank you, Peter. Listen, this is a very, very intelligent approach, a very intelligent solution to a problem that was raised or our awareness has been heightened by Susanna Nickerson. I really liked the outcome here. I think folks communicated well. Waterways Advisory, South Coastal, Shellfish Advisory, CONSCOM, and the Waterways Committee did a great job here. And the marinas kicked in as well. I've heard from two or three marinas that this is, this is the right way to go. They'll fix the floats as they, as they need to. But as you noted, Bob, these, these materials and supplies are hard to get and they become very expensive. To put the burden on the marinas and on us and town all at once is, is going to be too much of a burden. So I think this is a great outcome in the short term, and I'm very supportive. Thank you for all your hard work. To put the burden on the marinas and on us, the town, all at once is is going to be too much of a burden. So I think this is a great outcome in the short term and I'm very supportive. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Jeff. Shereen. Yeah, mute.
I'm not going to reiterate what Jeff said. I'm just going to agree wholeheartedly with his comments.
True. For any other comments? Yeah, I would agree. I think this is a great way to go. Dick, any any comments?
I don't think so. I think it's all been said. I think, you know, that we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. So let's bring it over to we need a. Well, on this one, we need a motion to place and to and to recommend.
Move to place, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none. Shereen.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Now I need a motion to recommend.
Yeah, you got it. Move to recommend.
Second.
Second. Okay, go with the vote. Shereen.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye, yep.
Chair says aye. Dr. Duncanson, over to you.
Okay, and then just quickly, as we're moving this into section 250, 265, the waterways regs. As a housekeeping item, we would go into section 215 or chapter 215. Of the general bylaws and just strike out the last part of item E2. Which in that bylaw basically exempted foam from the prohibition. In the construction of floats. So now if the previous article were to pass a town meeting where we're banning the foam use. We need to remove the exemption which allows the foam use in foam construction in art and. Yeah, section 215, sorry. So really, this just becomes a housekeeping. If the previous article passes. Then we would want to have this one pass as well, just to to remove that exemption.
Okay, any comments, questions? I don't see anything. Well, let's let's have a motion to place. Should I read the whole thing? I'll do it this first time. General bylaw amendment proposed poly styrene and expanded poly styrene foam by law change in chapter 215 floats revised from 22222. Have a motion motion to place.
So moved.
Yeah, in a second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none. Shereen.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And the chair says aye, and now we need a motion to recommend.
I'm moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, we'll take a vote. We'll go backwards. Jeff.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Shereen.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much, Dr. Duncanson and Dick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all the committees. They were a super job. Okay, final on is the capital authorization. Chatham Municipal Airport, federal fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Plan Project CQX. These have to do with avigatation easements and grant reimbursements. So let's see, it'll be Terry and I see the airport commissioner. Chair on. I'm just going to make a comment first and 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 on a couple of emails we received and and comments that were made. Not in a not 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 the one that was public today, but there were there's a couple of things that I maybe questions to before we start. But anyway. There was. There were comments that were provided to us that that RPZ, the RPZ determines the the easement navigation easements. I understand that. That's not the case. Never mind. There is there is a runway protection zone and that's the the. That that's for land use and then there's an approach zone. I I just want to make that clear because we hear it all the time. Try and tie the RPZ to avigatation easements. To me isn't correct. And then maybe I'm starting too early, but that's that's my comment upfront. And if I'm wrong, you could, we could talk through it. The the new approaches, one comment that was made, new approaches haven't been approved. And whether or not it's it's the right thing to do to to move ahead with avigatation easements. You can argue both sides of that. I'll I'll let that happen. But I want to characterize what we're saying here and. What was the last one? I'll I'll leave it at that for now. So let me run it over to, I don't know who's going to take this. It's Terry's on the on our. On our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe Terry is on the meeting tonight, so maybe Huntley, Harrison.
Huntley, okay.
I'm here.
Go ahead, Huntley.
I. Well, let's see. Frankly, I'm sorry. I didn't know where to, don't really know where to start other than. The the letter that you all have, the staff report that Terry and I put together. With regard to this capital authorization. The. Would you like me to explain the reason for the authorization and 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 what's behind it?
Yeah, let me let me put it to you. You know, I'm pretty direct. I mean, we talked about this previously in in general. We're talking about almost $2 million that's going to be on the. On 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 the warrant. Does that, there's a lot of concerns and questions out there about what that what that means. Right? I don't know if Alex is still on. Yeah, yeah. Is that going to go against the tax rate? That's one of the questions. Why are you doing it now when you don't have approach zones? Is it tied to the RPZ? If 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 is is it a requirement of FAA? I'll just say a general statement since I've been listening to you guys with this. Avigatation easements, this is the other part I was going to make. There are some. Existing properties, I I believe, that have trees that say that that go into the approach zone that that should be taken care of. Then there are others based upon the potential for new approaches. Is that correct?
Well, well, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. So you know, there's a number of properties that are going to be doing that. The so there there are a couple of ways we can look at. How we take care of whatever is penetrating into the airspace that airplanes have to consider. And if if they're penetrating into the airspace right now, based upon the approaches that we have right now, they have to be taken care of right now. If those that are in the future, why are we doing it now? That's a that's a rhetorical question. You can, not rhetorical, you can ask that. I mean, you should answer that. And and why are we spending, putting $2 million out there right now to 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 handle that? So does that help a little bit or am I? I can, yeah, let me let me. On an area that there's a lot of concern. You can see here, there's concern. I just want to make sure that they understand. Don't try to tie the RPZ to this. It's not it. You got to get better argument with the approach zone.
Right. Let me let me pick up on that, that it's a good segue. The easement project. Is really required to satisfy compliance. For the existing approaches. The trees have grown up into the approach surfaces. And regardless of of the the proposed approaches, which of course this would help anyway, the current approaches. Have this problem where there are trees growing into the approach surfaces. So the easement project. Will take care of, will take care of that. And there are those obstructions, basically, they need to be removed. The. The reason for the the 1.825. Eight five, I'm sorry, eight five two. It's eight five, I think it's eight five two. 500. Is basically because. Basically because this type of project, unlike say a taxi repaving. Where the engineers have come out in front and said, it'll cost this much for labor, this cost much for materials, this much. And so you have your costs all up front. And so those projects are immediately reimbursed as the project going on by the by the FAA or Mastot. In this project, first of all, 97,500 of it has already been approved. That was the increase in the cap for the revolving fund for 2023, FY23. So the remaining amount. Is for the easement project, which is different from the ones I just described in this way. We don't know how many easements there are going to be. There might be some people, property owners, who don't want to accept an easement. But let's say they do. The government will pay for the survey of the property. The government will pay for the appraisal of the property. In fact, there are two appraisals. One is the original appraisal and the other one is a check on that appraisal to see if it's a fair appraisal. Which will provide money back to the property owner for that particular easement. And the third part of that is for any legal fees incurred. For the for the for that easement. So there are three things that are basically unknowns that. The government is not going to put money up front for something that they don't know. There could, there could be. 20 property owners who want to take advantage of easements, or there could be two. We don't know yet. Mr. Karen and I have visited six property owners so far. Some are ambivalent about it. And some have said, no, I don't want an easement. So one way or the other. We have to put aside the worst case, the money for the worst case scenario, which is assuming that all the properties want an easement. So that money is out there. It's encumbered. It's put aside. Just sitting there. Until. The bills come in, then we have it, we pay, we pay for it. And then the government, then we submit to the government for reimbursement. And this is going to be a long project. This is not going to happen that quickly. Because we're dealing, you know, we're dealing with the property owners and there's some property owners I haven't even heard from yet, even though I have sent out a third request. Mr. Karen and I are going to visit six properties on Monday. Which will give us a total of. It'll give us a total of 12 or 13 properties that we visited. And we've had differing responses from everybody. So so we don't know exactly yet. So that's why we have to put through this this warrant article for the maximum amount. Which was an basically still an estimate based on, which was put forth by Gale Associates. Based on past experiences with this similar type of situation at other airports. So I think.
Yeah, Huntley, how many how many total properties? I know you wrote it. It was in your.
There are 20, there are 22, well, 21 property, 22 actually. One of them is a town property. So I'll just take that out. I don't think we're giving easement to ourselves.
Yeah, okay.
So there are 21 properties. We've we've talked to. 13 of them and I sent out seven letters. The other day.
Okay. And Alex? I see you're still on. The question is, Huntley said that they're encumbered. Where does the money come from? And if it's encumbered, it's kind of sitting over on the side as opposed to being on the tax rate. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, I was going to mention that because at the beginning of your meeting, there was a public statement that this would be on the tax rate. We're proposing this article to be funded through the use of free cash, so no effect on the tax rate. We have enough free cash that we could fund it. Again, the money would be held sort of encumbered for this purpose. If it is expended and then we get reimbursement from the federal, from the FAA, that would replenish the money, which at that time would close to free cash.
Okay, yeah, I have a few more questions, but I see a couple of hands. I think Corey was, not sure whether it was Corey or Dean first. Looks like Corey was first.
All right, Corey. Thank you, Peter. Just a couple of thoughts on this one. Is a situation like this. Why in the past I've said that we need to collaboratively work with the town, select board, town manager, airport manager, airport commission, the public. To discuss topics of such. You know, this is not a light ask, 1.852500, almost 1.9 million dollars is the is a is asked on this one. It's got to be encumbered. My thoughts are. You know, understanding there the variety of opinions and thoughts surrounding the airport and elements of the airport and topics, the airport I've been discussing over the last couple of years. I don't, I wouldn't rate the chances of this passing a town meeting very high, to be very frank about it. I. I I would, you know, this is an opportunity that we could get more answers to some of the questions that, you know, the airport chair said that. You know, they're they're still continuing the process, collecting data about, you know, each pro, each one of these 22 or 21 house properties. You know, what where their interest is, where their temperature is and and what we might do. And I believe the words that this is the kind of worst case scenario. This this is why the dollar amount is so high. So. I have a lot of lot of concern putting this forward to be very honest with you, but I do have one. One very straightforward question is. If we were to move this forward on town, if we were to put it on the town meeting warrant and it were to pass. We know obviously what direction we're going. If it were not to pass. Where would that lead the process?
I can answer that. Yeah.
Yep.
It would mean that the bylaw, chapter 100, would have to be enforced by the town.
Expand on that, please.
Chapter 100, it's puts the onus on the property owner to clear the the space under the approaches. And they get no money. It's all on them.
That maybe for some property owners, they may feel that's a better option.
I think we'll, we're going to probably find that there are some like that, exactly. You know, if it's if it's one tree, they might say, sure, I'll take the tree down. But we don't, right now, we don't know that.
Which.
So like I said, we've got to put that money out there just in case.
Well, I'll just go back to my point. I think we need to have more collaborative conversations on these areas. Before we start throwing around almost 1.9 million dollars on a on a warrant. So at this point, I'm not going to support moving this forward. So thank you.
Okay, Dean, then I saw Shereen and then Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Hi, Huntley. I just want to clarify one thing for the benefit of the public. I don't want to sound like I know it all, but an easement is something that would be owned by. The town or the airport mission. It's not something you give to the property owner. The property owner's property is being burdened by the. And some easements have value and some have no value. The select board recently, just I think, we could, two weeks ago. We took easements for two purposes and we did no damages. Because we got that. There was really no deprivation of value to the property. You know, we heard some hyperbolic comment about how much the. Be worth. It's really going to depend. If you take one tree down or if you're cutting, trimming one tree as opposed to trimming 30 trees. And and the types of trees will factor in too. But I, so. I wanted to ask, and I thought you were at a disadvantage because you don't have Mr. Karen here tonight, I don't think.
No, we don't. He's at another another meeting, another town meeting.
So you say that the 1.8 million was was determined by. So you say that the one point eight million was determined by their estimates. Does that include, you did refer to the cost of legal fees. Does that include the cost of litigation? So let me be specific. So you are unable to come to terms with a particular property owner by way of agreement. So the airport commission takes an easement by eminent domain. You have the power to do that under your statute. You award zero damages or a thousand dollars for damages, whatever, and the property owner is not satisfied with that payment, which is called a pro tanto. So they can file a lawsuit under chapter seventy-nine for assessment of damages. Is the litigation, is the cost of defense going to be underwritten by this one point eight, is that factored in?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. It's an unusual way to go about putting aside funds for eminent domain. Because typically what you do is you get the appraisals first, and you make your determination as to how much you're going to pay, if anything. And then you make the pro tanto, and then there might be a pure acceptance of that money, or they might go to court. So it's highly speculative, and I should want to know more about how that how that was computed, how that one point eight, one point nine was computed. You did explain, one of my questions was, you know, this is the first time when you've come before us and wanted a match, which we've already, I guess, authorized, you don't need the match from us because you're going to have it in your revolving fund, that ninety-seven thousand. But as you mentioned, the runway, the taxiway, which was done a couple of years ago, we've never had to come before the town meeting for the other ninety-five percent. So that's extraordinary, and this is a really a lot of money. And I guess I share Corey's prediction of what's going to happen at town meeting if this is on the warrant.
Well, let me ask this question. What, knowing full well that it would be reimbursed down the line, I don't
I think there is a perception problem, Huntley. You know, I just, I think that's a problem the commission has, under your leadership, has been trying to work on. I totally get that. But it's very hard when a narrative is out there that may or may not be accurate to beat it back. I was going to ask, and Corey asked the question, what are the consequences if this is not adopted? I understand the compliance issue with the grant assurances. And reference was made by you to chapter one hundred, and I guess I don't have chapter one hundred, the bylaw, chapter one hundred in front of me. My recollection is that it obligates the property owner. Doesn't it allow the town to go in and actually do the trimming?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it does. And it expressly says that that it is not operating under that, proceeding under that bylaw does not constitute the exercise of eminent domain. So whoever drafted that bylaw back when, was it put in place in nineteen seventy?
No, I think it was earlier than that. I think, I want to say nineteen fifty-eight, but
I thought it was in the fifties, okay. So that, it was framed that way, and it was framed as a police action, a police exercise of the police power of the town, which is simply a fancy term for regulatory authority, and that there would be no compensation. Now, someone could challenge that, admittedly so, and say, no, what in effect is happening here when you came in, when you, the town, or the airport commission, came in and chopped down my tree, constituted a taking, a taking of an easement. And I'm going to file a petition under chapter seventy-nine, it's section ten, under what's called the taking and pay, that's P-A-I-S, which basically is an informal taking. And it allows the property owner to come to the town, I guess in this case, the airport commission, and look for damages, and failing that, to file a proceeding under chapter seventy-nine. I lay that out because we know that these general bylaws of the town are submitted to the attorney general for approval. I don't know whether that process was in place back in the nineteen fifties. I just don't know. I was in the attorney general's office in the late seventies, and there was a bylaws division. And my understanding, I wasn't in that division, but I understand bylaws were coming in and being reviewed, as they are today. So if that in fact was the case in the nineteen fifties, one would presume there's a validity to that bylaw. But it seems to me that as difficult as it might be for some people to take, it might be better to proceed under that chapter one hundred bylaw, but I would do so contingent on having town council opine whether that's an approach that he feels is would pass muster under any legal challenge. Because I'd hate to see the town or the airport commission proceed under chapter one hundred only to have us be defaulted back to an eminent domain situation, as we do with these easements. But I want to end with one last question. You mentioned that the need to do this is not just to do it for future, for a future approach, but for the current approach that's been in place. Is there a, and I think that's an important fact, that a lot of people in this town don't get. We have obstructions in the way, and we need to clear them. That's why we put that bylaw in place in the nineteen fifties, and your predecessors on the board, going back, didn't attend to that, apparently.
Well, and also the trees were shorter.
Yeah. And over time, this accrued, and you're trying to deal with the real issue. So how much, is there a dichotomy between how much of the one point nine million relates to the current to the current approach, and how much might relate to the future approach, approach if adopted? Am I being unrealistic and even thinking that you can separate that out?
No, I mean, once it gets cleared, it's cleared for the current approaches, and it would be cleared for the proposed approaches. And the FAA would be more than happy to go ahead and provide us with the new approaches at that point. But they're not going to do anything for us until we can show them that we're in process of clearing the obstruction that exists now.
Has the FAA, has there been any communication, I apologize for asking more questions. Has there been any communication with the FAA regarding our chapter one hundred bylaw? I know they have a preference for easements. I think I've read that somewhere.
They do. They do. They prefer that because then there's a guarantee because the easement is in perpetuity. And with the chapter one hundred, unless we got something in writing from the property owner, which is not in the bylaw right now, the trees could grow up again.
Yeah.
Or they could plant another tree that would grow up in the future, and we'd be right back where we are today.
Right. I'll end with one comment, and some people may not like to hear this. When you buy a home near an airport, and you're close enough as these particular properties are, it's your responsibility to understand the implications of what exists at the airport at the time that you purchase it, and what the potentials are for future activities. I say that not to suggest that people have acted, you know, unadvisedly, but that is your responsibility. And it's like buying a house across from the transfer station, if you don't like the activities and operations that are going on there. So I think we have to try to be reasonable and come up with a workable solution. But I've got a real problem putting a one point nine million dollar capital expenditure before this town meeting, because I think it will be defeated. That's where I'm at on this. And I'm not sure this is the right approach. I would like to see, let me just end by saying, I'd like to see further explanation, further exploration with town council on the subject of utilizing chapter one hundred, because that's something we have in place now. And see what he has to say.
That's okay. You know, that's fine with me if you want to go that way. I think the FAA would want some guarantees that those trees wouldn't come back. But also, wouldn't that put the town in a situation with the property owners where they're going to say, all right, you're going to make me take the trees down, but I'm not going to pay for it. You're going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for it? Under this program with us, if they have an easement, if you look at our capital improvement plan, we're going to be looking at money to take the trees down.
Well, it might be cheaper to do it under one hundred, because you're not going to be involved in a whole lot of litigation unless the property owner is resistant. You'll have a definitive cost. You know, it would cost four hundred dollars to take a particular tree down. And then you would come before the town, or I presume under your own revolving fund. You're anticipating taking in more income, more revenues, aren't you? To the extent that that's not covered by the revolving fund, then you could come forward with a capital item and see if the select board wants to put that on the warrant. Anyway, I've taken enough time, and I understand you're in a quandary.
Yeah, we are. Absolutely we are. And if we came back to you and said, we need money for the you know, to take trees down and things like that after the fact, that could hit the tax rate, whereas this won't. Unless it was arranged the same way, that the money was encumbered out of free cash.
I don't think we typically use free cash for operations.
Okay, well.
No, I understand your point, but thank you, Huntley. I appreciate your
Okay, yeah, thank you, Dean. Let me, I had Shereen next, just make a comment. Just a quick comment. I see Mike Galen was on, he's part of the airport commission. I don't know, Shereen, if you want to hear from him first, or you speak?
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question, that's all. So I'd appreciate if I could have my time. Thanks. So Huntley, and Dean, thank you so much for asking those really pointed questions, because it helps me better understand, you know, the easement procedure. And so it goes to my question is, because I feel that there's going to be a huge perception problem as well going into town meeting. And again, as we had, unfortunately, this has been an ongoing issue, and I feel like, you know, and I don't know, because I'm not a property owner that's being impacted by this. I don't, planes fly over my house all the time, and I don't really, I don't have a problem with them. But I'm not in any of the areas that might be considered. But I guess, is there a way that this could be a phased approach? Like Dean had said, typically, there are appraisals that happen before, you know, before the fact. And maybe that there's funding for the appraisals. I don't know if that works in the process. I mean, you know, the chapter one hundred approach seems to be more of a logical approach after hearing the discussion. But is there any reason why there, and I understand the compliance piece, Huntley, but is there any reason why you wouldn't have taken the approach of doing the appraisals beforehand, before taking this full route?
You mean, doing them before now?
Yeah, no, no, having that as your first thing to do.
The first step is the survey of the property. So let's say property owner X says, okay, let's look at the easement possibility. Well, okay, we'll send a surveyor out to survey the property to make sure that the tree or trees are actually on their property. And they say, okay, the next step would be to have the appraiser go out and take a look, see what the fair market value would be.
So how much does both of those projects cost?
It depends on the property.
Okay, but other than the idea that there would be all kinds of money put aside for any mitigation that might have to happen?
I can't answer that. I don't know. If you're going to survey a one acre plot versus a three acre plot, that's going to be a different fee.
But you're asking for one point eight million dollars, you know, that I know that will be reimbursed. But if it was broken out to say, this is X is for this, and X is for that, and this is for that, would folks have a better understanding about it? I'm just trying to get a better handle.
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. The methodology that Gale Associates used to put this together was based, as I said a little earlier, on their experience at other airports where they had to do similar projects. And I think they probably had some basic figures that they could use to come up with that number. I don't think they just threw a dart and said, you know, it's going to be total cost one point nine five million. So I don't know exactly what the methodology was. I can certainly ask Matt Karen to provide that.
Okay, I think it would be helpful, anything would be helpful to give people more information and better understanding of why this needs to go forward.
Well, if it doesn't get put on the warrant tonight, I don't, I don't educating people after tonight might be a little late.
Right. That's all I have, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Shereen. Yeah, Huntley, but you know, the consensus I'm hearing, you know, I get a feedback. Anyway, you know, two comments, and I'll go to Jeff. One is, you know, if there's confusion on what's going to happen, it's going to have a difficult time. The other point, I'll make two points. One is, and I didn't say it as correctly as I think Dean mentioned, this is for existing easements, no matter what the proposed approaches are. Is that correct? Just a statement. That's a definitive statement. We have a problem now, no matter what. Okay, that's one thing. The other part of it, when we talk about the dollars that are associated with it, when you talk about one point nine million coming out of free cash, and I understand it's an estimate that sits over there, it's going to take a while. I've already heard, in my old lingo, we used to call that lazy money. It's sitting over there, it's not doing anything, you can't do anything with it. And some of it, you might have been able to use if you had a better idea of what it's going to cost. That's just a general comment, because you're going to hear it. Let me go to Jeff, and then we can go over.
Okay, but can I just have a quick follow-up? I think, and if Alex is still here, I think that during the process, as the process is going on, if the town needs some of that encumbered money, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they can use it and then just replenish it. She could probably obviously do a better job than I can with that.
Alex?
Free cash is, needs to be voted by town meeting for a specific purpose. So if it's voted for this purpose, it stays for this purpose only. It would take another vote of town meeting to reappropriate those funds for any other purpose.
Okay, thank you. My mistake.
Yes, okay. Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Peter. And you know, this one's fraught with issues. It's fraught with issues on the property owner's side, town side, the airport commission's side. It's to go to town meeting and ask to set aside one point eight five two five, and not know kind of with more certainty what the ultimate expense is going to be. What the ultimate expense is going to be and who's going to be paid and for what. I think we're leading with our chin and I think we'll take a left hook to the chin. So I I've got a lot. I've got so much to say. How? How do we get the desired result? With the least amount of disruption to property owners at the least cost, at the lower cost? How do we go about that? We've heard a couple of different avenues articulated this evening. If we have, I'm scratching my head. If we if we've had an issue with approaches today. Why haven't we gone to property owners and said, guys, we got to top these three pine trees? Are we chopping stuff down? Are we topping? My experience at the Falmouth Hospital was when we had these issues that we had to top trees. We didn't take them down. We just topped them. If they grow back, we topped them again to to clear out the the approaches. So I I just. We'll just get hammered. If we bring one nine, free cash, set aside, we don't know what, how it's going to be drawn down, you know, and where and how and who much. Although knowing that, again, we're leading with that chin. I would want I would want to at least have approached the twenty one property owners. And and got a feedback or feedback from them as to whether or not they're interested in a navigation easement. And what it costs, what the size of their property is, what it potentially would cost to appraise it and and on. And to come back with more concrete dollars. And and Huntley, God, I feel your pain. I feel your pain. This is not. This is not easy stuff. This is hard slogging. I get it. But to put this article in front of the taxpayers, I think I agree with my my brothers and sisters here. I I just think, again. Not to overuse the phrase, I just think we're kind of leading with our chin and I think we have more homework to do. The chapter, the chapter, the article one hundred approach, I I again, I echoed Selectman Davis, the dean was knowledgeable enough to bring it up. I'd approach some of the homeowners and say, look, we really want to cut down these five that have not cut down. I think it's topping. Maybe I'm wrong. Are we clearing out whole areas of land or are we topping pine trees?
No, I think there are. There are certain parcels where there are multiple trees. There are some parcels where it's it's one tree and we've even talked to certain property owners about doing exactly that. Trimming the tree down to a point where the vertical component of growth is minimized. And the horizontal. Component of growth is maximized. Now, neither I nor Matt Karen are arborists. So we can't give the property owners specific. Information about that. So we would have to, you know, determine what they want. And then go back and say, okay, this is what you want. You want this topped? Okay, here's what it's going to. Here's what it's going to be about. This is what it's going to cost. This is how we can do it. And you're certainly, we're willing to work with the property owners. We've talked to some about topping the trees. There's one woman on Agnes Lane. Who has a beautiful tree. I wouldn't want I don't want to take that tree down and we actually talked to her about about trimming the tree and and. Working with her so that it it wouldn't destroy the beauty of the tree on the property. I get it. I absolutely get it. And then there are other properties where the trees. You know, they're they're almost dead. They should come down. You know, they're full of wisteria, they're full of blinds and things like that, that they should come down. So in that case, you know. They'd be doing themselves a favor to get rid of the tree.
I have a I have a critical question in my mind. If we were to take the the article, the article one hundred run, the bylaw that we. And were we to use airport commission monies and or town monies? Would the FAA? Pay us back for the expenditure of those monies because we've approved the approaches and why not?
I can't get into specifics of that because I just don't know. But I know that the the FAA will only be involved if it's easements. That's it. That's what I've heard.
Well, can we ask that question, though? I mean, we're approving the approaches. We're we're expending local money, you know, and we're making it safer. Again, I go back to what's our desired result for the for for, you know, for. Making the approaches safer at the least amount of disruption to property owners at the lowest cost. That's what we want to accomplish. That's what we accomplish. And going to town meeting for a one nine ask.
Well, I I get it. I get it. I get all that and I knew I knew this would be tough. The. But every every conversation I've had since we've started this. With Matt Karen. Has been that the only way the the FAA will will pay in this AIP project. Is for the for easements and all the and everything involved with easements because the FAA will help out. If the property owner wants to go the easement route. But otherwise, it's all on on the town. And I know even though the airport commission is getting revenue, I don't know if we'd get enough revenue. To deal with. You know, taking down or trimming a whole lot of trees.
And are we sure it's really those twenty one? They've done a survey, you've that's nailed down?
Yep. Yep, we even bring the the survey to the to the property owners. We show them the map of where the trees. Are indicated.
Do we have any any roadmap from Mansfield or Nantucket or 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 anywhere else that that Gale has insight as to how they dealt with this problem?
I know I know we've done an informal look at Mansfield with regard to easements. And. One of the things we found out that the easements that were put in. I believe the majority of the easements, the property owner made money. Their property value went up. It didn't go down and they got they got easement money in their pocket. I don't know the specifics of that, but I because like I said, it was an informal survey. We did we did the Mansfield was done. I think Pittsburgh was done. But you know, all these airports are different.
Yeah, no, I know.
And and Chatham, Chatham has its own issues, you know, with regard to to that that situation, but. Which is why, you know, Gale came up with that large number as as a ballpark figure, assuming. That let's say everybody wanted to go the easement route.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that's I'm not sure that's a correct assumption, not for Chatham, I don't think. Be honest.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I guess that's it. I you know, I I again, I share your pain, but. More to come. I I would like to investigate the the one hundred route. To see those property owners that might be willing to have, you know, have clean up the property so that's safer and not top, you know, topping trees rather than ripping them out of the ground or. Clearing vast tracts of land. I mean, the least disruption to property owners. I mean, I I'm a property owner rights guy. The least disruption possible. Is 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 fair. And you may and it may be a one off property by property. I think it's going to be. I think it's some hard slogging on here. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Jeff. Mike's been patiently waiting and the camera's on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to answer some questions, this this is a unique program with the FAA. Every other program we come for the the five percent. This is the one time the FAA insists on the hundred percent upfront, the only type of program in which they do it. And exactly as Huntley said, it is only done for if you're taking the property through easement. Or eminent domain to get the easements and the numbers. I've asked Matt Karen directly where the number came from. And does it include estimates based on their experience with things like litigation? For eminent domain litigation or easement litigation? He said, yes, that's where the number was based. It doesn't mean it will be that number exactly, but that's where he came up with the figure. Based on similar situations, the need for litigation in some cases, the need for easement in some cases, an eminent domain domain in some cases. And part of why we have to do, we did it now is the process takes so long with the FAA. You know, it's a multi year program to get into compliance with where we are now. So we started it now.
I mean, we could we could get lucky as we go through this. We could get lucky and it might only be half. You're muted, Jeff.
No, I said that we don't know. That's my point. I mean, that's my point.
But I don't I don't know if we can know, you know what I mean?
Well, let me let me let me bring it back a minute and and I appreciate all this. The first thing. Dean, is your hand up? I can't tell.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay, let me just make a comment.
You can go first. Why don't you go first, Peter?
Okay, thank you. I know. The first point is and and is that, you know, say it again. These are these are these are problems for the approaches as they exist today, no matter. What changes are made.
Exactly.
It's not tied to the RPZ. It's not tied to future approaches than and that was not, I I'd say that's that was not clear. We've gotten a lot of questions on that.
No, that's nothing to do with the RPZs.
Yeah, if 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 we're going to, you know, if 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 people are going to complain about that, you can show that. That's that's a fact. You can show that on a piece of paper or whatever. That's the one thing. The second thing is you have to get rid. We have to be in a position where we can move to to take care of those easements. We have a certain number of properties. You've talked to some of the people. And you haven't talked to some others. I imagine there are a number of them out there that that believe that they don't have to take it to do the easement now. Or they are they may not. They're looking for something else. So. You come with a worst case scenario, which is understandable because there's a lot of unknowns of almost two million dollars. That unless all of this is explained and the question will be, why don't you? Have a better idea how much it was going to cost before you move ahead and kind of what Jeff was saying. So that's kind of where we are.
Yep.
Right? All right, Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just want to point out a couple of things because Mike Mike's brought up the length of time. To sort this out. If people file lawsuits. Under chapter seventy nine, that's the eminent domain statute. They have three years. There's a three year statute of limitations and they filed that lawsuit. And we all know how long it takes for a lawsuit to make its way through the court system. When I when I was in the Attorney General's office in the eminent domain division. The courts had what they called cleanup lists. We were going over to court and trying cases that were many, many years old. Because eminent domain cases tended to be. At the bottom of the priority list. In the court system. I don't know how it is today, but so it's it will take a long time to get this sorted out. I I very much like Jeff's, what I'll call soft approach. Trying to operate under the bylaw. The bylaw has a has a has a tough mechanism in it, but. And I know in one sense you're already doing this because you're meeting with people. But basically, you're meeting with people to say, hey, we need an navigation easement, which is.
Not quite.
Okay, go ahead.
We're giving them the choice. We're telling, giving them all their options.
Okay.
We're saying you can do it yourself and pay for it yourself. Or you can agree to a navigation easement. We've given them those options.
But you could you could go in and say, you know, you can do it yourself and pay for it, or we can come in and do it. And the town will pay for it. Or the airport commission will pay for it if you get the an appropriation to do that. I understand.
If I get an appropriate, yeah, and I haven't said that because I don't know if I'd get that.
If I'm a property owner. And the representative comes to me from the airport commission and says, hey, the trees are in the way. And that's and it's to your safety, to my safety as well. To have the tree. Not interfere, not obstruct the clearance of the of the airplane. Otherwise, I could have a plane fall down on my property. And cause damage or injury. But I'm going to be more receptive if you say, hey, we need to top this tree or we might need to take this particular tree down. And. You're free to do. I'm free to do it myself or the town is going to come in and the airport commission is going to come in and take it down, arrange to have it taken down and pay for it. I think I'm going to be far more receptive to that than for the airport commission to say, if I don't take it down myself. My only option is for is to give you an easement on my property. Well, I. I would prefer to see that. That softer discussion take place. But I again, I'll qualify it by saying before you undertake that, before you were to undertake that, I I do think you need to talk. Further if you haven't already. I think you do need to talk with town council and make sure he's comfortable that the bylaw. That was put together in the fifties and I have no idea who drafted it. I'm sure it was whoever was town council at the time. Whether that he thinks that, you know, holds up. In terms of validity. The last question, the last comment I'll make is. It might be useful. This is sort of picking up where Corey was saying at the very beginning, but maybe it's a modification of Corey's suggestion. I I think it would be beneficial if if Mr. Karen. Were to meet with this board. And we can discuss in some detail these options. That's not going to help you for the the upcoming town meeting because. We're closing the warrant on Tuesday. And I know there are possibilities for late files and special meetings within the annual meeting, but that'd be the worst thing you would want to do. So I I just don't think there's any, I can just speak for myself, but I'm hearing others. I don't think there's any appetite to put this thing on the warrant. For this coming town meeting and I I think it'll be defeated. I I've already predicted. I'm quoted in the paper this week as saying that the swimming pool petition is going to go down to defeat. And I think there are other things that are going to go down to defeat. But this is this is just too contentious, I think. Anyway, I'm sorry.
I will say this, you know, you mentioned having a meeting with the board. I mentioned that. About a month ago. That we would like to have, Matt Karen would like to have a meeting with the town council and the board. To discuss this whole thing. Unfortunately, it never came off. There was. There was a lot of other things going on, as you know, with the planning board and these other things. And all that. Business got in the way and we never had a chance to have that meeting. And now, unfortunately, I think we're paying the price for it.
I understand. Okay, thank you. That's the extent of my comments, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Let's see, any other comments from the board? Let me throw it back at you guys, just. Obviously, if we even place this on there, you're being told that it's probably not going to pass. Tell me you could take your chances, but. We have to vote affirmatively to stick it on the on the warrant to begin with. I. There is so much and. Argumentative discussion when it comes to the airport. That. Two million dollars is just a red flag out there. And I guess. I think, interestingly enough, right, you take a look at the participants that are on our board, on our on our meeting, there are probably people watching on TV. And and I'll bet you the first time many of them heard that that this is a an issue that has to deal with the existing. Existing approaches and existing airport, issues with the existing airport. And we've seen, I don't know how many times we've heard over the last month. That there were, you know, this is all tied to the approaches and new approaches and runway protection zone and all of that. So I'm going to ask a question. And I don't know if it's legal, maybe or. Do we have to vote on this or can the airport commission pull it if they wanted to, if they wanted to? Or do we have to vote on it? I don't know, only because having it having this, having having us not taking it to town meeting is. It's worse than than not having it on there, at least in my mind, because you've already gotten all the negative out there. Who knows what's what could be said. Without getting something, you know, something out there that I believe. In one respect, it'd be better to have a better understanding of what this thing is going to cost. And you can show it to it, you know, saying you don't know, but I don't know. But if you talk to all twenty one and you have an idea and a discussion. Maybe maybe that would be more helpful. I hate to be in your position to tell you the truth. But Jeff has his hand up. Let him do that because you may want to answer both at the same time. Go ahead, Jeff.
No, I would move to place and we vote it down.
Okay.
Would never get on the warrant. I would move to place it and then we would vote against it and would never get on the warrant. We do, I would move to place and then we would vote against it and we would never get on the warrant.
Yeah.
I believe.
Right, well, that's good. Yeah, it would probably happen anyway. Okay, go ahead, buddy.
I, I, I'd like to go. I'm going out on a limb here. I'd like to see it put on the warrant and I'd like, and like to take it to town meeting. And if it fails a town meeting and between now and then, if we can get answers to all these questions and, and get information out to the public on this that will explain some of the things that, that we've been talking about tonight, I'd rather do that and fail there than to fail tonight. And, you know, that, that, that suggestion Jeff just made with, with regard to remove, you know, us saying, okay, take it off.
Uh, okay, I'm the guy actually take it off. I, again, that was a question, but, but have, having, you're, you want, you want this board, after you've heard what they said about the, the amount of money that's required and what, where is it coming from? We're gonna have to do due diligence based upon what's now, not what might happen, you know, three months from now, I, I, or a month and a half from now. That's, that's the problem. And, um, th- there's, there's too, it's too easy to say you don't have enough information. You ought to go get the information first before you come here to us. Uh, you know, that being town meeting, who you're going to. So I'll, I'll leave it up, you know, we'll, we'll, we're gonna vote on it.
Yeah, I felt we had enough information, but apparently not.
No, it's not the matter, yeah, you got the information, but you don't have enough specific information.
That's what, yeah, not enough specifics. And I don't know if we can get them. That's the thing. I don't know how we can come right down to the, I know we can't come down to the, you know, the dollar. No, but each of those things, I have no idea.
If you had all 21 interviewed, you knew that three or four of them are okay. You knew you were gonna have maybe two guys go in the court and, and, and the rest were gonna either, you know, maybe meet some kind of an agreement. You'd have a, you could point to say, this is what we have. And this is how we, we determine how much we're gonna need. And, and you, and you're coming with, you're coming with the point that it has to get done. You know, because it's existing, so. But that's just, you know, my.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And I, I, because I, I, I think, you know, you, you don't want stuff in the approach zone. You don't want things sticking up out of there. Uh, you know, no matter how good you are, you never, just never know how, what's gonna happen. That's a three dimensional, you're in it and you're not driving around at, you know, 50, 60 miles an hour. So, and in that three dimensional mi- environment you're in flying an airplane for crying out loud. Jeffrey, Jeff, your hands up.
Uh, I, I think you're gonna need some kind of plan B if you bring this before the town. And I think you're, and I think, you know, as much as I, I know we need to fix what's out there, but I, I think we, we, we need to come up with a strategy that, that, um, it doesn't require a vote at town meeting, this town meeting. You've got two months to get interviews for 21 people and amass your data and come up with the facts. Um, you know, I don't know if you have the time to do that or not.
Well, I know that hopefully by Monday I'll have answers where after Monday, maybe 13 of them.
Okay, I, I, I'm just, I fear one thing. I fear bringing this to town meeting now will follow the nest or follow the vote going forward for a more meaningful approach or a more palatable approach. That, that's my personal feeling.
All right.
But again, I understand where you're at. I do, it's not, not pretty. That's, yeah.
Okay, uh.
I'm in your hands.
Um, Corey.
Okay, I, I have a question, I have two, two, two areas I wanna have questions. Uh, one, um, you know, I've been fully supportive and, and of having a collaborative, you know, discussion, you know, and Huntley mentioned, the chairman mentioned how, um, you know, he, I, I, the impression I, the words I heard were that he wanted to have attorney, uh, Karen meet with our town council and the select board, have a, you know, a conversation. If I've heard that correctly, I guess the question is, when was that suggested and to whom? Because as far as I've heard anything of it, because I would be very supportive of those, these kind of steps.
It never got any traction.
Who was it asked? Staff, board member?
I don't wanna throw to the bus. Ah, no, 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 you don't have to worry about it. You're not gonna hurt my feelings. I mean, you know, it was brought up in individually and when we're trying to, well, it was within a month. Maybe a month, within a month. And here we are on our second, you know, where were we gonna put that considering it? And basically we thought we'd have more information, especially from, uh, the, um, uh, the abutters. And think about the last month we've been in and trying to put this kind of a discussion again. We had two, how many, we've had a, you know, not, this is not an excuse, but it, but how many, how many cooperative meetings? We've had two to three cooperative meetings over the last year and two years with the airport commission on jurisdiction. And, and yes, this is different. This has nothing to do, yeah, it does somewhat, has something to do with it. But the, the airport commission had a number of other issues that were, 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 we were discussing and, and brought up. You know, um, and this one was iffy, right? I mean, we don't know how much, I heard 2 million, a million something a long time ago. We gotta, gotta get more information and just talk about what we might wanna do, you know? So he's basically, I give. I'm sorry.
All right, so this is my point is, is, you know, we, we don't have, we weren't able to have a timely discussion to get the appropriate information out, to take the appropriate action for the results we're ultimately shooting for. So with that thought, or that, those, that said, um, I have a gut feeling we're gonna have a fall town meeting. I don't know how many articles are brewing in them because it's been mentioned over and over again. I will, I am not gonna recommend was placing on the town meeting in May, but I would strongly suggest that you do the outreach to all the property owners, collect all the data and be queued up because probably in the fall, we're gonna be meeting on some particular topic or topics. This could be one of them. Um, that way you're gonna lose maybe a couple of months, but if it goes down in flames in May, you're gonna lose even more time. Um, so I think this from a mechanic, mechanics perspective, um, that would be my suggestion. Um, I'm, I'm not voting put it on a town meeting, uh, for May, um, but that's my thought process. I think it'd be more beneficial way of handling this. Um, and those are just my, my, my thoughts. So that's what I'm, my thoughts to share. I'm done.
Thank you. I see Shereen's hands up.
I think Dean's was up before mine, but I just wanted to say, I just have one thing, if you don't mind. Does anybody else on this board feel like we've been rushed into a few things to get them on the warrant this year? I just really, really think that this year has been extraordinarily rushed. And I, 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 I think that, you know, we've pushed back a little bit on some of it and it's no fault. It's no fault of, of anybody's, but I just think we're, we're in this big rush. And if we're bringing things to town meeting that we have tons of questions about and we're not and they're, and we don't feel like they're prepared, uh, it doesn't, we're not representing the town appropriately. And I just feel like, I agree with you, Corey. I don't think I can recommend this, but I would encourage us, uh, uh, the due diligence to be done on this project and then to turn around and maybe have a special town meeting to address it in the fall.
I could buy into that.
I would agree.
Okay.
I could buy into that. If we, if, if, if we came back and maybe there was a special town meeting, yeah, I, 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 I could, I, you know, a couple of months, yeah, I can, I can deal with that. And we can get, you know, we'll have all the property owners at that point. We'll know for sure where things stand and, and, uh, yeah, it's been a, uh, it's been tough. Just getting in touch with the property owners have been tough. But, uh, you know, I, I don't know if some are giving me pushback or giving me the airport commission pushback because they don't like it or want it, or they, they've been rece, they've received information. I know they've received information from the critics of the whole thing, uh, which, which some of them have, I know for a fact they believe because we, we've had to straighten them out when we've talked to them. So, I mean, we're up against that too. Uh, but I think if we can, if we can have a couple more months, we can come back with, hopefully maybe even some hard data. Uh, it would be estimated because we, you know, we don't have, uh, we won't have the surveys, we won't have the, the actual, uh, easement dollars or, you know, or, or the appraisal dollars uh, with us, but we might be able to come back with some, some data that says, well, here are 10 people who will take down their trees on their own. Here's someone else who, you know, would, would like an easement. So that's fair enough, like, yeah, if, 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 if I can get a, I, I can't say a guarantee, but a, 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 a good solid, yeah, we can, we have a, the possibility of a, of a special town meeting to cover this and whatever other topics need to be covered at that point, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. So I, I'll, I'll, I'll pull this if, if, if that's the best thing, if I, that's the best thing to do right now. And I think it is, hearing you guys.
Uh, Dean, it might be better for us to vote, but, uh, have Dean and, and, and Jeff and, and the strongest argument you have for moving ahead quickly is the fact that you have existing problems now. Not based on anything in the future, it is now. Uh, Dean, go ahead and Jeff.
Thank you, Peter. That's a, that's a very good point, Peter. That really is a good point. Uh, and I, I share the suggestion that we could do this at a, at a, at a fall town meeting. I think Huntley, uh, some of the information that you, you need to get is a breakdown, this goes back to something Shereen was talking about a while back. A breakdown of, you know, what's the cost of the surveys? What's the cost of the appraisals? What's the potential cost of litigation? Because the, the litigation to me is, I, I guess I'm understanding to include not just attorney's fees, but also the cost of the, um, payments for the easement. We need to, we need to have that breakdown. But again, uh, I hope that when you come back to us, it'll be a, a discussion that's not focused entirely on navigation easements as the solution, but includes what Jeff outlined earlier and what I referred to as a softer approach.
Right.
And you'll have, you'll be in a better position to tell us if that's viable after you've met with all these, with all the, um, the 21, uh, property owners. With respect to taking a vote tonight, you know, the other night we did not, we chose not to take a vote to put the RPZ on the warrant. We simply referred it to the planning board. I don't think we have to take a vote. I would prefer not to take a vote and just take, have no action. Because take a vote and vote this down, we're gonna see a headline out there that says, "Select Board Votes Down Navigation Easements." And you're gonna see pamphlets all over town by your critics. So that's.
I, I, I agree with that. I, I think, I, I just would refer to you, you not vote, I'll pull it. We're done.
I'm okay with that. Thanks, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Huntley.
And Corey, thank you for that suggestion about the fall. I, I, you know, it, we're, I, I felt, I guess I felt that to some degree that I was up against a hard stop.
No, 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 I don't think, yeah, we, we don't, go, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I think that's a wonderful outcome, fully in favor. My earlier comment about moving it and, and voting no was just if Huntley really, really, really wanted to get on the warrant and wanted him to know that, you know, there wasn't out, you know, there potentially might have been an out by us. So anyway, I think it's a wonderful outcome, fully in favor and, uh, Godspeed, Huntley, and to your commission.
Thank you, Huntley.
Seriously. You know, I'm telling you, I, I feel your pain, I really do, you know that, so.
Yeah.
And we've been, we've been very supportive as a board. It's just, we also, you know, kinda can hear the drum, we can hear the drum beat.
We're your friends, Hunt. We're your friends.
No, I know, I, I appreciate, I'll tell you, I, I do appreciate the support. I, I, I absolutely, you know, I know we're all in a tough spot. We're all in a tough spot and, and, and this is probably one of the toughest. I mean, we spent two hours on the, on, with the planning board. We spent two hours the other night. I mean, you know, it just, yeah, it, it's tough.
A minutes will show that the proposal was withdrawn and no action taken.
Right.
Thank, thank you. And the only other comment I'd make with, with, uh, coming back to the board after you do, do some of the stuff, you, you, you know, uh, you won't be afraid, but you know, if there's a recommendation that the town can help and provide certain funding for it, prove, say, this is, this is, you know, we, we'll, we'll need this from the town if we're gonna proceed without going with easements. Nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
And, and then town, we can decide if it's too much money, it's too much money. If it isn't, you know, whatever.
Yep.
So, um, you, you know, obviously, you know, we, we, when it comes to, for me, when it comes to the, what I've been, what we have as a board gone through over the last couple of years with our discussions with our legal counsel and our legal councils, on special legal councils when it comes to the airport, uh, and, uh, I firmly support, uh, you know, following the law. You know, you're, there, at least, and how it's been presented to us. Um, I understand there are other opinions out there and there's, there's a few more. That's fine, but as far as I'm concerned as a board member, you know, it, I, I don't always have to listen to my legal counsel, but I do it at my own risk. Uh, uh, yeah, I've always seen it that way and I can disagree, but in, in this case, we're looking out for what's good for the entire town. And I don't wanna preach it, but, but I, I think that there are a number of people that, that have opinions on what should happen and concerns about the airport, so do I. Concerns about noise, concerns about certain things, but you, you just have to, you have, have to get a, get your, get our act together as far as what we're going to do and who, I'm gonna say it again, and you've heard Dean say it. Who's can make the decision and what can you do if you wanna change something? And how long is that going to take? And basically where we have to, if we're gonna have any major changes, have to deal with a federal agency. You can say they're not the right ones, but I'm sorry, they think they are. And, and, and they have a number of regulations that, that support it. So enough of this. Uh, anyway, Jeff, go ahead.
I, yeah, thank you, Peter. And I, I just, I just wanna reinforce, um, Selectman Davis's comment about kind of the, the push here at, at, to get the warrant out. Uh, there's usually a push, always a push, but I, I, I don't think I've ever experienced a push with such meaty issues so late in the game. So I guess lesson learned is, is if, in our heart of hearts, we know we have some meaty issues out there. Let, let's get them teed up before the last week before the warrant. And I think that's a message that we gotta bring to the town manager and elsewhere, but because, you know, we're, we're, these are not, these, these are issues fraught with issues. These are our potential articles fraught, fraught with issues and they, they take some deliberation and I don't believe we've been afforded enough time to do that. So I agree with you, Shereen. Just wanna get on record.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I think, I'm, I'm done. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your time with this and certainly understand where we're going with it. And then I'm actually, I don't know, to some degree pleased. So, yeah. All right, y'all, thank you.
Yep.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hey. Uh, any other comments before we have a vote to adjourn?
No.
It's 10 o'clock anyway.
Peter, you have, you have two weeks, Pete, Peter, you have two weeks to do a Tom Brady. That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, my. I got it. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Good, Dean.
Um, okay, I need a vote to adjourn.
Vote to adjourn. I'm voting to adjourn.
Second.
Second, okay, let's take a vote. Shereen.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Jeff.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, and the, and the chair says aye. Good night, Chatham. Thank you. Have a nice weekend.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.